All right, so it's close enough to six. I'll also go ahead and get started. So there is a-
This conference will now be recorded.
Now I have to watch what I see.
Now you can go.
All right, so now that it's six o'clock and we've got a quorum present, I'd like to call to order the regular session of the City of Leavenworth Planning Commission for the September the fourteenth. First order of business is approval of minutes. Any additional information or things from the staff with regarding the minutes?
No.
Okay. So then commissioners, I'm assuming you've had the- Sorry, break up. I'd like to introduce, we have two new members of the Planning Commission. I'd like to introduce them at this time. So I'd like to thank Mr. Joseph Burks and Mr. James Diggs for volunteering and joining the commission. You were sorely missed over the last couple of months. So thank you and welcome to the commission.
You too.
You're welcome. Now we'll take a look at the minutes. And so any questions from the commissioners regarding the minutes from our July meeting?
Hey, Sherri, is that you that's called in? I've got a caller, I'm not sure who it is. Yeah, I don't think we'll be able to vote on minutes since we only have two commissioners who work here during that meeting, so we can just hold those until the next meeting, and that's fine.
Thank you. All right, well, this regard, so we won't vote on the July meeting. In any case, might as well go ahead and move to new business. So we have four items for this evening. First item is 2020-28-REZONING-619-SOUTH FOURTH STREET. We have the staff report, please.
Okay, Jackie Porter's going to handle this one.
All right, the applicant, The Development Inc., owned by Jeremy Grunemeyer, is requesting a rezoning of a property located at 619 South Fourth Street from Office Business District to General Business District. The office building that operated as a American Family Insurance Office has been vacant for five to six years. Development Inc. purchased the property in October of 2019. The rezoning is being requested by the property owner to allow the opportunity for a broader variety of uses to be considered at the property. This property is in close proximity to downtown commercial area. All right. And for the conditions of determination, the character of the neighborhood, the subject property in the site was a former American Family Insurance Office, which is currently vacant. To the south is the Leavenworth laundromat. To the southeast is a single-family home. To the west is a First United Methodist Church. To the northwest is a First Presbyterian Church. To the north is a single-family, to the east is a single-family neighborhood. The subject property is located along the South Fourth Street, which is classified as an arterial street and designed to handle high volume of traffic. And then B, the zoning and use of properties nearby. To the south is a laundromat, zoned neighborhood business district. To the southeast is a single-family, zoned R16. To the west is a church, the United Methodist Church, zoned office business district. To the northwest is the First Presbyterian Church, which is also zoned office business district. To the north is a single-family, zoned office business district. To the east is a single-family residential neighborhood, all zoned R16 and office business district. The remainder of the neighborhood consists of single families, homes zoned R16 and neighborhood business district. Okay. C, the subject property was built in 1970. The building has been used as an office building and is unsuitable for residential use. D, the proposed rezoning should have little detrimental effect upon surrounding properties. The subject building has been used for office space prior to the current owner. No significant effect on nearby properties is anticipated due to the rezoning. E, the existing building has consistently operated in an office business district used since the construction in 1970. The last remaining tenant vacated the building after the passing of the previous owner five to six years ago. F, the proposed rezoning will have a positive effect on the public health and welfare by providing a current or correct zoning to correlate with the surrounding properties along a densely used arterial street, which has been proposed by the 2010 Comprehensive Plan to Be Zoned Commercial. G, staff recommends to approve the approval of the rezoning request. H, the area is identified as appropriate for the commercial uses on the future land use map. Therefore, staff finds the proposed use to be conformant with the overall goals of the adopted comprehensive plan. A, no factors. And that is it.
All right, thank you for the report.
Okay, I do not believe we have the applicant here, but we can answer any questions that you might have for staff.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff regarding this rezoning?
I certainly don't see any conflict with that. The thing is, I think that building is all the under renovation and change now in preparation for his plans.
Yeah, I believe they've been working on the inside of it a little bit. Rezoning it to the general business district just sort of opens up the types of uses that they could market it to. It doesn't really substantially change it, it just gives them a little bit more flexibility in the type of tenants that they could get in there.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Any other questions? I mean, it appears fairly straightforward, I think. All right, so I think we have three options, right? We can recommend approval of the rezoning requests from R16 to GBD to the city commission. We can recommend denial of the rezoning request. I'm sorry. But there is nobody- sorry, is anybody here that would like to speak either for or against?
There is a typo. It should be OBD instead of R16.
Okay. All right, so I'll close the- sorry, I'll close the public meeting, and since there's no one here to speak for that. Then I'll ask, we have three options. We can either approve it, we can recommend denial, or we can take the table to issue for additional information. At this time, I'll take a motion and a second with regards to a recommendation.
I will make a recommendation that we approve that rezoning approval going from OBD to the general business district.
All right, it has been-
The second.
Second? Thank you, Jane. All right, all in favor, say aye or raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. It is approved, as you requested.
Aye.
All right. Item number two is 2020-29-SPECIAL USE PERMIT FOR 220 SPRUCE STREET. Do we have the staff report, please?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a special use permit to allow a childcare center in a residential district zoned R16. Residential childcare centers are in allowed use within the R16 zoning district with approval of a special use permit. I will just note that the operator of this daycare, Savannah Nelson, did previously have a special use permit for a childcare center over on Fifth Avenue that the Planning Commission approved back in 2018. That home sustained a significant amount of fire damage earlier this year, and so they had to vacate that property. And so they have moved to this location, and she has reopened her daycare center in this spot. So she is licensed by the state of Kansas to care for a maximum of 12 children, depending on their ages, as is standard with the state licenses that the state does approve. And that is the same type of license that she previously had at her other location. So just to go through the conditions of determination, the first is that it shall not be located along an arterial street. This property is along a residential street. Second is that there shall be at least 100 square feet of outdoor open space per child, enclosed by a minimum of a four-foot-high fence or wall. The property does have a backyard area that's approximately 2,100 square feet, that's fenced in by a four-foot fence, so that does meet that requirement. The third is that there shall be provided a loading zone capable of accommodating at least two automobiles for pickup and discharge. There is no driveway or off-street parking area at this property, however, that is common in this neighborhood. There are very few homes that do have a driveway or off-street parking area. And there is ample parking space on the street in front of this home. The way that the backyard is fenced, there is actually space for cars to pull into the property outside of the fenced area, off of the alley, if they need to pick up or drop off kids away from the street area. The fourth is that it shall conform to all requirements of the state of Kansas and that there shall be issuance of a state of Kansas childcare center license. She has provided a copy of her license from the state. The fifth is that all childcare centers operating in a residential district shall be the only legal residence of the operator. This home does function as the residence of the operator. And the sixth is that childcare centers may have one non-illuminated monument sign up to three square feet, or one three-square-foot sign attached to the home. She does have two signs out in the yard. I drove by today, there are two, so she'll just need to take one of those down and can have one of those up in the yard. So then, just to run- so those are the specific findings for daycare centers, and then just the commission findings that are general to special use permits, I'll run through those. The first is that the proposed special use complies with all applicable provisions of the city ordinance. Staff does find that to be the case. The second is that the proposed special use at this location will contribute to and promote the economic development, welfare, and convenience to the public. And we would just note that childcare centers are an essential part of economic vitality in any city, allowing people to work and have their children cared for while they're doing so. The third is that the special use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is located. Staff does not feel that the proposed childcare center will cause any damage to the neighborhood. The fourth is that the location and size of the special use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that the special use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood, so as to prevent development and use of neighboring property in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations. And there is no new construction proposed as part of this. It is a single-family residence and will continue to operate as such. Notification was denied to property owners within 200 feet of the property as required by Kansas statute. We did actually- and in the policy report, it says that we didn't receive any feedback. We actually did have one neighbor who did contact us, who was in opposition to the childcare center. She did not give a specific reason, but did indicate her opposition to it. So with that, staff would recommend approval of the special use permit based on the findings included in the policy report, subject to four conditions that are listed there. The first being that the minimum of 1,200 square feet of open space enclosed by the four-foot-high fence shall be maintained in good condition. The second is that a copy of the permanent group daycare home license shall be provided annually upon renewal by the state. The third is that the operation shall be limited to a maximum of 12 children. And the fourth is that no additional home occupations may be carried out at the residence. Failure to comply with any of those conditions could result in revocation of the special use permit. So with that, the applicant is here. If you have any questions for her, or I can answer any that you might have for staff.
Thank you for the report. Questions for staff about this special use permit? All right, so it's a public meeting, so I'll open it for any comments from the public. I mean, would like to speak for or against this special use permit? All right, I hear nothing, so in that case, I will close the public meeting and open it up for one last time for any comments or questions or considerations from commissioners or from the staff.
Well, to me, it's obvious that the operators have been in compliance with the state requirements and meet all the requirements, and are doing a good job on that, so thank you on that one. Seven at the- since we only had one opposition, that it's not any major impact to the local community or people around that facility, so with everything going on, childcare centers are certainly in need, and thank you for what you're doing on that one. So with that, it doesn't appear that this is another example of greater good, and it's a win-win for us, so thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll accept a motion. We have three options. We can, based upon findings stated and conditions, be presented to recommend approval of the city commission, motion to recommend denial of the city commission, or a table to issue for additional information or consideration.
I'll go ahead and make then the recommendation that we authorize a special use permit for 220 Spruce Street for the rezoning of that to authorize a child development center at that location.
Thank you. Motion made. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, you say aye and raise your right hand? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Not opposed? There is no opposition, we will pass this special use permit. Ma'am, thank you very much. Good luck to you again.
Thank you.
Better luck. All right, open up to number three, which is 2020-TAC-30-TAC-REZONING-728-Eisenhower. Do we have the staff report, please?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As he said, this is a request for rezoning for the property located at 728 Eisenhower from R125 Low Density Single Family Residential District to General Business District. This is a 14.35 acre lot. It's located along Eisenhower between Dylan's and the West Side Family Church, which is the former Play Bounce and Jump location. This rezoning is being requested in order to allow for future commercial development there, along that stretch of Eisenhower. It is in conformance with the future land use plan in the 2010 Comprehensive Plan. The applicant has proposed a conceptual site plan as part of this. We would note that this is just conceptual in nature. This is not a final site plan. There are no tenants secured for this property. This is just to show how the development might look with this property. What they've proposed as part of this conceptual site plan is three commercial pad sites out front along Eisenhower with some multifamily or mixed uses to the north, which would be a transition between that commercial development and the single-family homes that are to the north of the property. If this property were to develop in that fashion, another rezoning could be needed in the future if there were to be some multifamily or other mixed-use-type uses to come in here. But for now, they're just requesting the rezoning to General Business District for that entire property to help in marketing that to tenants. So to go through the conditions of determination, the first is the character of the neighborhood. Again, this property is directly adjacent to the Eisenhower Road corridor with the existing Dylan's Grocery Store to the east and the West Side Family Church to the west. To the north, there is a single-family residential development, and across the road is actually Lansing, and that is the site of the Catholic Cemetery. The second is the zoning and uses of nearby properties. The properties to the east and west are zoned GBD, General Business District, and the property to the north is zoned R19, which is medium-density single-family residential. C is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. Again, it is currently zoned R125 Low Density Single Family Residential District, which is typical of agricultural uses within the city. That's the zoning that you'll typically find with those types of uses in town. However, that does not allow for the highest and best use of a property along a commercial corridor such as Eisenhower. D is the extent to which the removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning should have little detrimental effect on nearby properties since the majority of properties along the Eisenhower Road corridor are already commercial in nature. E is the length of time the subject property has remained vacant as zoned. The property has always been a single-family agricultural in use and has always had the R125 zoning placed on it. F is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. The proposed rezoning should have a positive effect upon the economy of Leavenworth by allowing, again, for more commercial development along Eisenhower. And as you're probably aware, there are some pretty major improvements planned to Eisenhower that will be taking place here within the next year, and those are intended to open up the capacity of Eisenhower and the safety of that stretch of road. So that is planning for more intense uses along this stretch already. E is the recommendation of staff. Staff does recommend approval of this request. H is the conformance of the request to change to the adopted Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It does conform to the land use plan that does show commercial there along Eisenhower. It does show medium-density residential uses to the north, and again, that is the long-term goal for this property, to have that to the north portion there. And aye is any other such factors, and there is really nothing else of note for this.
Thank you very much.
So we do have an applicant here who can speak further to this if you'd like, and I can answer any questions that you might have for staff.
So first staff question is, has anybody got back to us disagreeing with this recommendation?
We have not had any correspondence from property owners that were notified, either for or against. And I will also just notice or just make note that typically in the city, we have to do a 200-foot radius for notification. Anything that borders and goes outside of the city in that radius, we have to notify within 1,000 feet. So on the south side there into Lansing, we had to notify 1,000 feet out, and we had no correspondence from anybody.
Great, thank you. And then I have another question, I guess maybe for the staff or maybe the applicant. As I'm looking at the very first color photograph with the yellow box around it, I noticed to the north, there's looks appears to be two lots north. Is that owned by these folks or? And so I see a hand up, sir, if you want to-
I will let you come up to the microphone, just so we can get you.
And just give you a name and address and-
Yes, my name is Mark Rosalsky. I own five acres lengthwise, directly north of the proposal. Am I allowed to?
Yep, yep. Go ahead and say.
Okay. For the record, I vehemently oppose this rezoning. Several issues, first of all, there's no identification of what the general business district, it's too ambiguous. You know, what is going to be in there? My property, if you notice, Dylan's is also a commercial. All night long, I hear cars, trucks backing into Dylan's with their horns beeping. I don't need any more of that, okay? And with- there's, again, there's no definition of what's going to go in there. You know, so that's one issue I oppose that. Next is, what's it going to do to my property value? The value of my property is the acreage in total. So having a commercial district budded up against my property, you know, who knows what kind of dealings and events and whatever is going to be going on directly in my property? And I have people cutting through my property from Dylan's already. I don't need any more of that. So there's the question of my property values are going to go up, but with a commercial district here, now the property taxes are going to go up. So, you know, I don't need that. So those are my three main points of to reject this proposal. And my neighbor to the north, who would also be affected, I believe he has something to say.
All right, so good, just sir, thank you for your comments. Where exactly is your property on this map? Can I get over there?
Yeah, please.
I think you're-
Yes, that's the blue box, that's me.
All right.
So, and I'll have to speak. So mine would be the one just to-
North of that?
So we have identical properties. I'm Dan Soxey, 5004 Shrine Park Road. So if you're on Shrine Park, I'm the third property north of Dylan's, but we have identical long five acres. And I bought that property 20 years ago because of the appeal of the acreage that both my neighbors had. And then I went through the whole thing of the subdivision being developed and all that changing to the north of me, which I was totally against, but, you know, now I have a subdivision to the north, so I'm against because I don't know, you know, what would be going in there and how that would affect my property value, Mark's property value. And, you know, you're right, the trucks are already loud, and we knew that when we bought that, so I'm not going to use the Dylan's as an excuse, but we don't need more noise. And, you know, would that be parking lot? Would there be roads going back in there all the way up against his property to put more businesses, or would the businesses just be facing Eisenhower? So that's our questions. So I'm against, and that's 5004 Shrine Park. We have identical long properties there. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments from staff? So the applicant's not here.
Pete Heaven, are you representing the applicant on this?
No, I'm not.
Okay, you're not representing this applicant?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, it looks like we do not have anybody on for them, then.
All right. So with these gentlemen's concerns, at what point would we ask the applicant to produce a much more detailed plan regarding the usage? Or would we have to- at what time would we have to ask him for that?
That would be at whatever point they have tenants secured for this. So sometimes that would be at this point with the rezoning. Sometimes it might be in the future, it just kind of depends on the development. It's my understanding that it's much easier to market properties that are already zoned correctly if they're looking for commercial-type uses. So when we would see a site plan would be when they would have a tenant, and that would come through our development review committee and not the planning commission.
All right. Have they indicated that they intend on doing any construction whatsoever? They're just, this is really just the first step, is asking for the rezoning.
This is just asking for the rezoning.
Okay. Questions? Other questions?
I think Mr. Rosalsky has another question.
Comment.
Yeah, Mr. Rosalsky, just pertaining to what you had just mentioned, again, the- I was approached by a realtor if I wanted to sell my property. And I declined on that. But, oh gosh, my glasses keep fogging up. The- Currently, you know, there's a for sale sign, and I forget what the realty-
Cobblewell.
Cobblewell Bankers. They, my understanding, they do not have a buyer for this property. And so they're just, you know, shooting in the breeze here to get the, as she stated, yes, the property is more valuable as commercial, as opposed to the low-density residential, but it, like I said before, it's too ambiguous, and we could get stuck with something bad. Now, I would be inclined to accept if it was just the frontage of Eisenhower with some sort of green space between my property and there, but that picture, and that was the first time I've seen that, they, you know, they want to use the property all the way up to my fence line. That's all I have.
No, that's a valid concern. I know in the past that we have asked the developers to include some sort of barrier between either the road and the, like Eisenhower and the light industry- it's the, further down in Eisenhower, I'm searching for the name of the place that we- anyway, but we could go ahead and make that a condition of further development by adding a noise barrier or some sort of assistance with that. Sorry.
That's the risk that you would be running in recommending approval of a conceptual site plan with this and not a more developed final site plan. Since there are no tenants identified, this isn't a set-in-stone site plan. If it was, and this was a set-site plan with identified tenants, you would have a lot more control over requesting certain accommodations and site development features. But with something like this, where the site plan really isn't tied into anything concrete, you lose a little bit of that control.
But they're going to have to come back to us eventually?
They would not have to come back to you. Once that zoning is in place, then they can put in any use that's allowed in that zoning district. In the site plan, then we'll just go to the development review committee, which is just our internal staff review committee.
So then, could we recommend a condition that has them develop or provide to us, come back to the commission, this commission, ask with a more detailed plan prior to going to?
I don't, I don't believe you can do that since the planning commission is not set up to do site plan reviews unless they're tied to a rezoning. So it would need to be tied to this rezoning and come through at your time at this time of approval.
Okay. Please?
Another point, from that picture, the diagram, my home is where the A is. And so in some distance of, or close distance to where that, that property would be.
All right. All right, other thoughts, comments from commissioners? Sir?
Mr. Rosalsky, question please. So you, you talked about your property value. I've got quite, how long have you lived there, sir?
About eight years.
Okay, all right. And, and whenever, I mean, has your property value gone down in those eight years with Hy-Vee and?
No, I, I based-
I mean Dylan's, I'm sorry.
I based my understanding of my, my current property value by the, by the property tax I'm paying, and it has gone up.
Okay, all right. And how long has this lot been vacant again?
It's always been this way. It's never been developed with anything. I would suspect at one point, this was, you know, before any of this was developed, it was a much larger portion and by one person before it got portioned up into residential and Dylan's and the other commercial that's along Eisenhower, would be my guess.
All right, and the way I understand it is, we can't really ask for more, more of a vision, more of a concept from those asking for the rezon-
You can. You could certainly table this and say that you wanted to see it come back with a more developed site plan. That's certainly an option that you have.
Could, could we ask that the, the whole lot be, you should know that everything north of the basin would stay R-1?
We can't. So was the question, could we keep part of it residential and zone only part of it commercial? Was that the question, James?
Right, could we ask the owner to do that?
We can't-
Change this lot?
Yeah, we can't place two different zoning districts on one lot, and we can't, we couldn't just divide it into two lots east to west with a north lot and a south lot because then that would leave this north portion cut off from any road frontage or access. So any, any rezoning at this point would have to take place over the entire lot unless they come through with a more developed site plan in which they're going to plat it into multiple lots that have access and different easements that would allow access to the entire property. So at this point, no, we cannot do that.
I've got a point of interest, where you see the, the church that used to be the play bouncing jump directly to the west of that, that open lot there, that is also for sale and by, by the same realtor who was selling this other property. And the history of, if you look to the, the property, to the, to the east of the property, that block above Dylan's, he is the brother of the father who owned that property. And the, the, the son, and I think the two sisters are trying to sell that property in total. He's currently, the son is currently living in that little property there. But I understand where they're coming from, but, you know, once they sell it, they're out of here, and they're going to leave me with the noise and, and the hassle of the commercial in my backyard.
Okay, good point. All right, we go ahead and close the public meeting and, again, ask of the commissioners, any final questions or thoughts?
Well, I want to go on record, we've got to be sensitive to residential owners and people that have been there a long time and have this property. I got that. But we also know the future of Eisenhower and where it's going, and we're not going to stop that. If not today, it'll be tomorrow. So we're kind of discussing something of greater good and business in Eisenhower versus residential. And we know where it's going to go sooner or later, and I think you know that. It's just a matter of when on that one. And so I'm like, you know, it was like, what business is going there? We have three commercial sites that are going to be put up there. We're changing it from single-family to a general business in there, which is in the future of Eisenhower. It's evident that's the future of Eisenhower. I don't know how to, you need to protect homeowners there at this time and put any requirements in there. And I think we've heard some comments about, well, what businesses are going on? Are the businesses going to be in harmony and not in conflict that cause them more noise with the tenants there now? So I got that one if I had that property. What's going in there and how much noise and what's it going to be like? But I don't, as Julie said, we can't put a condition on that. All we're looking at is either approving or not approving the zoning request at this time. Is that correct?
Correct. So as I said, you could certainly table this and ask the developer to come back with a more concrete site plan, which may be next month. It may be in six months, depending on where they're at with it. The last we knew from that developer, they did not have any tenants locked down. So it is certainly within your purview to expect more detailed site plan. Otherwise, you are just sort of opening it up to any use that's allowed within general business district.
And Mr. Commissioner, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with just opening that up with, with no input to the community that's behind them to say what their plan might be. And I think we, I, I think I owe that to the, to the community.
Okay.
When the zoning commission meets and we've discussed this, the future with zoning businesses, is it our concern of what businesses are in there that we need to know that in advance before we approve the change in zoning? In the past, we have not necessarily said, we will change zoning if you specifically tell us exactly what's going in there before we approve it. We can request it, and I got that. I understand the point there. It's a valid point. But I'm just asking, is that something that's a, is that a requirement for us to approve the zoning request at this time?
I think there's a difference between wanting to know the exact businesses and the type of use. Again, this is just a very conceptual site plan. It's, it's highly unlikely that it would actually stay what it's shown as right now. So it's, it's absolutely within your purview to ask for a more concrete site plan. An example I'll give is the development up here at Seventh and Metropolitan. You've seen that come in several times with the plats and, and a few different items. And tenants, specific tenants have not been announced, but you've seen a very specific, detailed site plan and plat as to how that is going to be developed. So that type, that level of development is what you could expect to see with something like this, if not these specific tenants, you know, oh, this is going to be a Michael's, this is going to be a PetSmart. You could certainly expect a more detailed site plan.
So I think we have three options, and the, appears to me we're shifting towards item or our third choice. So I'm willing to take a motion on how we want to handle this particular request. Do we want to, do we make a motion?
I'd like to motion that we table this pending further information and a better concept.
All right, so it's, it's been, motions been made. Can I get a second?
Got a question on this motion. We're tabling that, but are we specifically saying we're tabling it with the intent to ask whether businesses are going there?
No, we're asking for a detailed site plan.
Just give a detailed site plan.
How are we going to take care of their issues? How are we going to take care of the owners' issues?
They have, they're better informed-
Got it.
With when this decision is made by us, at least they know that we've done our due diligence.
Agreed, okay, thank you.
So can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye, raise your right hand. Aye?
Aye.
All right, so we're tabling this issue, and we're asking for a more detailed site plan from the developer. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to item number four. The redevelopment project plan, Price Chopper TIF, which is, I had that, anyway, Tiff District, staff report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, this item is to determine the consistency of the redevelopment project plan for the Price Chopper Tiff District with the adopted comprehensive plan. On August 11th of this year, the City Commission adopted an ordinance establishing a Tiff District for the Price Chopper store located on Fourth Street. And that Tiff District will be in effect for 20 years from the date that the project plan is approved by the City Commission. And part of that Tiff District, one cent of the city's sales tax and the incremental ad valorem tax, property taxes generated from the property would go back to the district and constitute those Tiff revenues for the developer to aid in funding the, this project. So the owner and developer of the property is proposing improvements to this store, including a multimillion-dollar renovation of the interior and exterior of that Price Chopper store, and improvements to the property just north of the store for parking. That property is currently owned by the city, and so that will all be looped into this. So per Kansas statute, any eligible, or any project that's in a redevelopment project area must be found to be consistent with the intent of the adopted comprehensive plan of the city. And so that's what we're doing here tonight. It's not the planning commission's duty to determine whether Tiff financing is appropriate for this location or the extent of the improvements that are being proposed. It's just to determine that the district is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan doesn't specifically address this type of development, but there are a few areas in which it, there are some consistencies. The comprehensive plan does state that the Fourth Street corridor should be enhanced and emphasized as an integral complementary commercial corridor leading into downtown, which this area of it would be a part of. The plan also emphasizes that incentivizing infill development should be prioritized. And while this isn't specifically infill development, since it's already an existing store, redeveloping and enhancing existing locations, staff believes does meet the intent of that goal. And then finally, the comprehensive plan does identify tax increment financing as an appropriate and desirable incentive for commercial and retail development projects within the city. So with that, staff would find that the redevelopment project plan for the Price Chopper Tiff District is consistent with the overall intent of the comprehensive plan. Pete Heaven is representing the developer on this. He can probably speak a lot more knowledgeably to the process for this if you have any questions for him.
Thank you for the staff report. Any questions of staff before we open up to representative? I mean, it seems pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah, and so again, the City Commission has already been working on this for some time, and so this is one step in them moving forward with getting that Tiff District established.
No question. Anything from our gentleman who's called in?
Pete, did you have anything to add?
I guess not.
I'll take that as a no.
He's looking for his mute button.
Unmute.
Oh, I can't, won't let me unmute him.
Yeah. Okay. So let's assume that he has nothing for us right now. So I guess we can take a motion to essentially say that this Tiff District is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan?
Yep, that would be the motion.
All right, so I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion that this, that we approve this, that this motion is, is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan.
Thank you, second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, sir, second. All in favor, say aye, raise your right hand. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is passed. I thank you, gentlemen, for that. Any other, so we're done with the meeting, so thank you very much, appreciate everybody's effort. So we have a meeting next month?
Do we have, yep, we have a couple of items, two for next month. Okay, the, is it the plat? Okay, so the plat for the Fort Gate Marketplace up here at Seventh and Metropolitan. And I'm sure you've all been by, they've got the commander's end down, the bank is down, it's looking a lot different, and so they'll, I think they're waiting for the plat to go through. We had the first project for that at our DRC meeting last week, so they're getting their ducks in a row for that, and so once they get the site work done up there, they should start seeing some construction.
I see the cat and dog clinic is leaving. Is the-
It is mov, it's just moving.
Yeah, so is the, is the repair shop staying or going?
As far as I know, it is staying. We have not heard that it's moving. I know a couple of years back, he had sold that and had purchased a location over on Cherokee, I believe. I think it was Cherokee over closer to 10th Street and had started building a shop over there. And then his sale fell through up here, was our understanding of it. So I have not heard if he is under contract or, or has anything, but I, I assume that the intent would be for him to get out of that location at some point as well. But yeah, the dog and cat clinic is moving over to Seventh Street, just south of Metropolitan. On the west side, there is a church in the little strip center there.
And we just rezoned that.
Yes, you just rezoned it. Yep, so they're, they're well into working on the inside of that property. I'm not sure what their timeline is for moving in, but they are, they do have their interior renovations on there, over there underway.
Good. Anything else going on that we know of? I mean, if Linda was here, she'd ask all sorts of questions about-
I know, she'd have a list for me to research.
A list of buildings and stuff.
Yeah.
I, I guess I do have a question. So, she's, the applicant has gone, so houses that have been suffered damage by fire, how long before they can start doing something about that? Or is there something that, so for instance, I'm not picking out one, but the house at the end of our street burned up in March, and it's still sitting there in the same condition since the beginning of March. So I just, I'm assuming that we're waiting for the fire investigation to be done or the insurance company to?
There, there's a number of factors that go into those. Our, our building inspection division typically handles those fire damaged structures. So a few of the things, we have to wait on their, their insurance sometimes if there is homeowner's insurance, which there, there isn't always insurance. Those proceeds can take a while for homeowners to get. Sometimes they cannot start improvements until they get those proceeds. So that can take a while. If there is no insurance and a homeowner just wants to use their own funds to repair it, the city tries to work with them on that and give them some leeway and some time to do that. I'm not sure what the situation with that one is, but it's, it can tend to be a lengthy process. If it gets to the point where nothing is happening, I don't believe there's a set timeframe in which something has to happen. We try to work with each individual property owner as they come up. But eventually, if nothing happens, they do get to the point where the city would come in and demolish it if need be.
Thank you. I just, I mean, it is my street, I'm not being selfish, but it is my street.
And, and it depends on the severity of it, too. If it's just some interior fire damage and it's not going to fall down, you know, we're probably not going to tear that down. But if it's something where half of the house has burned off and it's dangerous, then, you know, we'd, we'd be a little more quick with getting something resolved on that.
And then I just noticed, so the Starbucks is going in on Fourth, and then they, there's that little lot, I guess, between Home Depot and, sorry, Home Depot and the new, the new Starbucks and self-storage. I guess that's for sale now, too. Or there's a for sale sign out.
Yeah, I, we have not heard anything about that, so I can honestly tell you that.
Okay, so I'm, yeah, so we'll see it sometime before the commission. All right, well, I, thanks, that was stray thoughts that I had, I appreciate it. End it?
Okay.
All right, ladies, gentlemen, thank you very much. See you next month.
Yeah, well, thanks to Joe and James for joining us, and it's nice to have a full board again. We've been without for a while.
And we had our first mildly disagreeable action.
Understood.
Because they can't get pretty, we have had some loud and barely.
Well, yeah.
If y'all are German, I can say something.
I got you in the meeting at 6:49, thank you. Sorry, sorry.